I have board meeting tonight if you can find me when you get home.
We need a broadcasting light.
Okay, we're all here, so it's, uh, are you ready? Okay. So, welcome everyone who's joining us. Why don't you let them in? So, welcome everyone who's joining us, and I guess you're gonna keep continuing to join us, that's good. If you're joining us through Google Meet, can you just turn off your mic and turn off your camera unless you wanna actually speak during the public comment? So, we'll call the meeting to order at 5:30 PM. Public notice, this meeting was posted in the school district office and website, all school buildings, Lodi Enterprise, Portage Daily Register, Lodi City Hall, Lodi Town Hall, Dane Village Hall, yes, and Dane Township Hall, West Point Town Hall, Vienna Town Hall, Lodi Public Library, Mail to the Clerks at Arlington, Decoro, and Roxbury Townships.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
That was terrible, sir.
Let me get all your names down. Okay, first by Stephen and a second by Shelley to approve the agenda. Roll call, Stephen?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
And Adam says yes, passes seven to zero. Next on the agenda is public input. Purpose of the citizen input agenda item is for the public to provide comments on any agenda item or to publicly address the Board of Education on items that pertain to school business. The amount of time allotted for each speaker will generally not exceed five minutes per person to all people who wish to speak an opportunity to be heard. However, the President may modify the time limits at his or her discretion. If the speaker has questions for the Board, they will be duly noted, and responses will be provided in an appropriate manner. But the Board cannot respond to individual questions or individual comments as part of the public input agenda item. As an additional reminder, the Board cannot take action on any item that is brought forward during public input session or on any item that is not posted on the meeting's agenda. Citizen input is an important part of the Board meeting agenda, and the Board appreciates hearing from the community on issues concerning them and our school district. We do have two people here today, would either of you like to speak today? Okay? What about online? Did we get anybody requesting?
There's nobody requesting on here unless somebody wants to unmute their mic and talk.
Does anyone online want to do public input? Now would be the time to unmute your mic and say your piece?
You need a bigger board.
I think we have somebody here.
Can I say quick question? This is Tess Carr.
Yeah, you can ask any question, and we may not be able to answer it if it's not on the agenda, though.
I don't wanna take up any time now, but I was just wondering whether there'd be any further opportunity for public input once the agenda items begin to be addressed.
Generally, we don't do it that way.
Okay. And I guess at this time, I would just like to vote strongly for the all virtual option, at least at the beginning of the school year, and at least as an option, but preferably for all.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to do public comment online? Okay, we're gonna, oh, go ahead.
I would like to just do a public comment online.
Could you state your name, please?
Uh, yes, Abby Taheda.
Okay.
Uh, I just wanted to share that last week I had sent a letter to all the Board members. I wanna thank you for taking the time to read my email, and for those-
I just like to comment.
Okay, hang on.
And for those that didn't respond back, I would like to just say thank you for taking the time to read. I also wanna say that, you know, I want nothing more than being back in school with students and staff. However, I feel strongly right now that science and safety supersedes being back in the building right now. I believe right now, the one model with the lowest risk for students, teachers, and staff is online learning. Regardless of the decision you make tonight, I will continue to support the Board, the students, and the school district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Abby. Someone else was talking in the background, they wanted to make a public comment?
Hi, this is Maggie Zor. I'm a mom. I have kids in three different schools in Lodi. And I would just like to make a statement that my daughter is currently in in-person summer school at the primary school. It is, it has been a fabulous experience, and I feel incredibly safe. I have seen the cleaning mechanisms that they have installed. I have seen the social distancing and the seriousness of all staff and teachers that have been, that they've been taking. I feel 100% confident in the district and their abilities to send my children to school in person. And I trust that their well-being emotionally and mentally, as well as with the COVID virus, will be all considered before a decision is made. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Anyone else like to do public comment online?
I would. My name is Nicole McKern. I have two kids in school, and I have a niece who's also in the summer school, the in-person summer school. It is going very well. And I would like to strongly encourage the in-person schooling as well, not only for the kids' mental health, but, um, I know there's a lot that goes into it, but there's just so many parents that work. And the virtual option is so hard to do when you work and have, I don't have that, but I know there's a lot of people that do, so that's one thing. And, um, the kids need to get more socialization. I know it's social distancing, but still being around their friends. So I would, yeah, I'd just really like to strongly encourage the in-person option. I do feel completely safe, like Maggie. I've seen what's been going on with the summer school, and I'm completely confident in the safety and the precautions that are taking place. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Nicole. Does anyone else like to do online public input? Yeah. Anyone else online like to do public input?
Hi, Shelly, this is Robbie Harrington. I have two kiddos at Lodi. I'd also would like to add why in-person school. The thing that I'm concerned with, they could go virtual, which I've hearing from one, he has decided to go virtual. But all the kids in large are getting together and helps us to have our classes together. They are sometimes felt more comfortable without coming to school and working on seeing work as social distancing. And, you know, they've organized rather than everyone just then outside of the school training together on their own to do their school together.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else online like to do public input? Samantha, we can't hear you because you're muted if you're speaking. You have to unmute your mic. Where is the mute button dialer? Oh, it's in the middle. It's at the bottom of your screen in the middle.
You could type in the chat if you'd like to, I'll read it.
We could ask her to wave if she wants to talk.
Yeah, she's trying to do it.
Mo, is there anything else in the chat?
Yeah, she's waving.
Not yet from her. If she would like to, she could type in there, I can read it.
So Samantha, it's right at the bottom of your screen. There should be a microphone that's red. You wanna click that microphone. Can you do it, Maggie?
There it is.
Okay, can you?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay.
Yay! I am very much for in-person. My son will be switching to Lodi Middle School this year, and, um... Completely depressed, very depressed. He isn't seeing any of his friends in person because everybody's scary. And I just, he needs to go back. He needs the social interaction. He needs the structure. I would say he didn't learn much at the end of last year, and a lot of my other kids, if I try to ask them what they learned, they can't remember. So, just for his own mental health, I think he needs to go back.
Okay, thank you, Samantha. Is there anyone else who would like to speak online?
Uh, this is Tess Carr. I'd like to add to what I said earlier, since it was very brief.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd just like to add in support of keeping all classes virtual, or at least providing an all-virtual option. That we're actually talking about life and death here, and that the school districts that are facing surrounding communities with surging rates of COVID are the ones who are making the decision to go all online and are worried about people dying. And this is something that we would be putting on our children in terms of correct mask-wearing, and social distancing, and hand washing. And as a mother of three kids in the Lodi School District, who are careful kids, relatively speaking, I think that would be virtually impossible. And it would be asking them to protect themselves from possible lifelong health consequences, as well as their families and any health-compromised individuals and elderly people they may be coming into contact with.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone, anyone else online who would like to speak?
We just had one type in that she'd already spoke, but she would like to-
I think that was the one just spoke.
-ask if there's been a teacher-only vote for in-person options or online only, and what those results were.
I'm covering that, right?
Yep.
Yeah, there's a survey as part of the presentation tonight. Survey results from staff and from community members will be part of our presentation.
Great, so we'll cover that, okay.
And one more. I am not able to have my mic on right now, but I would like a virtual option also. My child is an only child, and I am very much, and I very much understand the need for socializing. But I feel it is more important for my child's mental health to be able to still have contact with family that is immune-compromised. And Stacy Jesse asked, what data is there to support that?
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move into the next part of the meeting. So, if it is a public meeting, all of you that are online, you are welcome to keep your camera on if you want, but it does eat up a lot of bandwidth. So if you're just listening to us go through the meeting, you might wanna just turn off your video and turn off your mic. You'll still be connected, you'll still hear us, we just won't see you anymore. And it'll save a lot of the bandwidth, so... Okay, so we're gonna go through a whole bunch of presentations on data by different people, and so you'll hear all different kinds of viewpoints and different parameters around these decisions, and I think Vince is gonna start that off?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so first of all, thank you all for getting together for a special board meeting. I know there is a lot of information to sift through, right? We sat here last week, a week ago tonight, and had a lot of conversation wrapped around the different models, right? And it was really great feedback from the Board on the different models we've gone through. We went through some survey results. Since that time, we have surveyed the families and staff, and we're gonna share all that information tonight. Please know that, as I mentioned last Wednesday, with that feedback that everybody gave on the different models, I have links to that in our presentation. We didn't make any changes, right? We didn't have a chance, as I shared last week, with administrators, we, our next scheduled meeting is next Monday. So we didn't have a chance to change any of those things. Obviously, we have that information there. So, we're gonna start out, and Mo, do you have that presentation, the school reopening information? Please? Reopening information, that, there you go, perfect, yep. So, go to the second page. So just kind of give you a preview of this presentation. We're gonna look at some local data around COVID-19. We're gonna look at data from staff and family surveys. We're gonna look at, I'm gonna share the guidance, the most updated guidance that we have from CDC, DHS, Department of Health Human Services in the state of Wisconsin, Columbia County Public Health and Public Health, Madison-Dane County. Kind of talk about a framework for reopening schools, or steps that, you know, we could look at. Kind of share some draft criteria for moving through those steps. Talk a little bit about co-curriculars, and then really just, you know, talk to the Board about next steps. So I'm gonna start by just talking about local data. It's kind of a snapshot of COVID-19 data in Wisconsin, Columbia County, and Dane County. So if you look at Wisconsin's cases, you do notice, obviously, that is not trending in the right direction. We are currently at a total of 50,000 cases, and this is as of yesterday's. This is yesterday's data. Our school nurse, Jean Winter, put this information together for me. So if you scroll into the next one, I'm gonna spend a whole lot of time on data, but the next one, I can go to the next one, is Columbia County. So right now, we have 198 cases in Columbia County. Again, we are starting to spike up a little bit. That is actually now at 204. I got an email today, so it's gone up a little bit more. Next one, Mo. Dane County has 3,900 cases. But, you know, again, their data is actually starting to go in the right direction a little bit more. They obviously have half a million more people in their county than we do, so when you start looking at numbers, that kind of skews it a little bit. Go to the next one, Mo, please. So if you look at Wisconsin's cases, as you can see, we're really, and anybody's been watching the news has known this, right? We are surging in the wrong direction. You know, I just hit the news yesterday, you know, another state, or Chicago, has put a quarantine on anybody coming in from Wisconsin. They're not allowing them in, which, again, for some of us who maybe are not Bears or Packers fans, right? That's okay. But the other issue is people coming to Wisconsin, right? Come to the Lodi area from Illinois, or Door County, or northern Wisconsin, are gonna face a 14-day quarantine. It's gonna have an impact, a significant impact on the tourism industry in Wisconsin from doing that. Again, because of those numbers are going up. If we look at Columbia County, again, the numbers are going up. As I said, we had 198, which is now 204. But if you look, within the last month, we have doubled the amount of cases that we have had in this county. We went from 99 to now over 200 in the last month. If you look at Dane County, it's the same. They have, in the last month, doubled their cases. So COVID is not going away, right? It's going the wrong direction for us. And this is a snapshot. If you look at Columbia County's public health website, this is what they'll show, and again, this is as of yesterday. It will be updated today to a little bit, 200, or 204 cases. But it just kind of talks to that level, right? And if you look at the trending data, or you look at the DAS, sorry, the DAS, then it, again, that is going up, not quite as steep. But again, most of our new cases right now are the 18 to 29-year-old demographic. But DAS continued to rise in the state of Wisconsin as well. This graphic is very busy and very difficult sometimes to read. But what it tries to do is the state of Wisconsin's effort at trying to balance out population, right? So you hear Dane County's numbers at 3,900, and you hear, you know, Columbia County's at 198, and you're like, well, that problem's much worse in Dane County than it is in Columbia County. Till you start looking at the population size. So this graph talks about burden that is on each of these counties based on their population. And Columbia County and Dane County are very similar with their burden, right? And the activity level of both is very high for both of those counties when it comes to COVID-19. So it's one of those things that we sometimes think about, while Dane County's having much more issues than Columbia County, well, there's a big numbers difference between those two counties. And again, this data changes from day to day, right? Looking at the infection rates, right now, as of today, the infection rate in Columbia County is higher than it is in Dane County. Now, could that change tomorrow? It could change tomorrow, but... And Dane County's numbers, if you look at their infection rate, seem to be coming back down a little bit, but they've also put a mask rule in place. They've closed down a lot of bars and things like that, or put more restrictions. They've become much more restrictive in what they're doing in that county as well. So it's just kind of a background in some of the COVID, more specific COVID data to Dane County, Columbia, because we have, we straddle those two counties, right? So that information is really valuable to us to know exactly where we are with those. So I wanted to share that background information before we talked about the surveys. Any questions from the Board members on any of that data?
Yeah, how does this get skewed? Because the, I received some information that negative tests, positive tests, you can get in 36 to 48 hours, and negative tests can take 14 days.
Yeah, I have not heard that today. I was on a call with Columbia County, and depending on where you go get tested, the results of that test can take anywhere from 48 hours to seven days. So that is an issue, right? So if you think about it from a student perspective, or from just this group of people here today, if one of us would have, you know, would have some symptoms and tested tomorrow, it might be another week before I know, like if it was me, whether I was positive or not. At that point, you know, if I've infected any of you, you haven't, you would've been a week going and talking to other people and doing other things. Depending on what you're doing on the weekends or doing with your time, you may have infected other people. And now you think of that in a classroom setting, or a school setting, that it could take, you know, five days, sick days, for us to find out if somebody who went home ill and gets tested, if they test positive. And it depends on where they go. And obviously, with the surge in numbers, there's been more testing going on, which has slowed, backed up some of our labs a little bit as well. So the next piece is, when we met last week, one of the things we really talked about was surveying staff and surveying families about the possibility of reopening. So we did put those surveys together last Thursday, and they went out last Thursday and Friday with an email and a video, kind of explaining what we were asking to do. They're not really long, in-depth surveys. Again, the idea would be is when we decide on what model we're gonna go with, we'll probably need to survey some more and get more specifics about that. But we wanted to make sure, again, it was a short turnaround time, that people, it wouldn't be a long survey, and they're like, oh, it's gonna take too long. It was a pretty quick, quick survey for us. So, Mr. Carles, Dr., sorry, Dr. Carles and Ms. Loken are gonna go over both of the, these survey results.
I'm gonna start with the Guardian survey results. So this slide right here just shows you the number of Guardian survey responses that we have per building. So we can go to the next slide. This slide is relative to the following question that was asked for the Guardian survey. If public health officials give us guidance that it is safe to return to school with safety measures in place, will you be sending your child to school starting on September 1? And you can see the information here designated per building. And, you know, of the Guardians at each school that took the survey, the percentage for each category is represented. percentage for each category is represented. So, in the light green, you can see the response, which is basically, "Yes, I plan on sending my student to school if we're gonna find ourselves in a face-to-face format, and, uh, but I have concerns." The blue would be, "Yes, I plan on sending my student in a face-to-face format, uh, and, and I have no concerns at the moment." Yellow, "No, I do not plan on sending my student to school, uh, in a face-to-face format, and a physician will advise my child to stay at home." So, maybe there is some sort of underlying health condition. Uh, in the dark green is, "No, I will not be sending my child to school as I have some concerns related to safety." Um, that is a slide to give you information about the level of concern from, um, our respondents thus far. Okay. The second slide is relative to the following question. "Knowing what you know today, what would be your preferred instructional delivery option for your child in the fall?" So, again, our Gar- our Guardians fill this out relative to their student at each level or each building. Um, the light green here shows the percentage of Guardian respondents at each building that indicated that they preferred starting in a traditional model with safety precautions, is what the question asked. Okay? So, that gives you the percentage for each building or level that preferred the traditional, and that was in the light green. Um, the blue has the percentage of Guardian respondents at each building that indicated they would prefer a blended model. Okay, the blended was in the blue. The yellow was the percentage of respondents at each building that indicated they would prefer a virtual or online model for starting in the fall. And of note, the uh, dark green is the percentage of respondents that indicated that regardless of this decision, they, their child would not be attending and would, would prefer a virtual. So, as you're assessing traditional versus blended versus virtual, you'll probably wanna combine the dark green and the yellow to get a full breadth of the percentage that would prefer a virtual. There's a couple of other ways to look at this data. You could look at the light green and the blue, and you could say that is relative to the percentage of Guardians who completed the survey that in some fashion would like to see some type of face-to-face, right? Or you could combine the dark green and the yellow and the blue together and ask, say to yourself, "Well, this is the percentage of Guardian respondents that in some level prefer some type of virtual as well." So, there's a few different ways to look at those pieces of information. The next slide, um, really asks the percentage of Guardians at each, or just the percentage of Guardians who felt, um, a particular factor was of note and related to the following question. So, "As it relates to student physical, students physically returning to school, which factors would help you feel more comfortable? Please check all that apply." And so, there was checkboxes next to a list of factors, things like students required to wear a mask, staff required to wear a mask, sanitizing supplies, including hand sanitizers, sand sanitizers readily available. And so, if you look to the far left, you can see the percentage of Guardians that selected that factor as something they would like to see having in place if we were to return in a face-to-face format. Okay? Good information for us to reflect on, if we find ourselves there. And the last question relates to, um, riding the bus, and so we looked to collect some information on that. Um, definitely reflected on this question after we got the survey results back. Uh, good information to have for us right now, but we would, this would be something we would need to collect additional information, right? Because we would need everybody's response to this, um, as we continue to plan for the fall, if we find that we will be utilizing busing in some format. So, that is relative to the results for, from the Guardian surveys, and I will turn it over to talk about staff.
All right. Staff survey participation is the next slide, and it just shows you how many staff participated. So, this could be a combination of teachers and support staff that participated. Do note, when we look at the percentages when it comes to OSC, that that's six people, so that's a relatively small group. So, as you go through, they might look a little skewed just because it's such a small group, so. Um, but relatively high percentage of people participating. So, the first question is, again, you'll see some similarities between the two surveys, but the first question is, "If public health officials give us guidance that it's safe to return to school with safety measures in place, what is your level of concern?" So, this is laid out very similarly by building, by staff members that responded, with green meaning, "I have significant concerns," blue meaning, "I have slight concerns," yellow, "I'm neutral," and, um, dark green being, "No, I'm not concerned at all." So, just good for us to reflect on in terms of, you know, how are staff feeling about coming into the buildings, um, and being with groups of kids. Uh, the next question is, "Knowing what you know today, what would be your preferred instructional delivery option for the school in which you work in the fall?" So, again, data is divided out by school. Uh, the green talks about traditional, so coming back face-to-face, um, everyone together. The blue is blended, the yellow is, um, a virtual or online. And again, that's where you see the OSC number looks kind of skewed, but that's because it's a small number of people. Uh, this next one's a little bit trickier. So, at the middle school and high school, we asked a question of staff specific to, "If we come back face-to-face." So, this is only if we come back face-to-face. "Which version of face-to-face would you prefer?" So, there were two options for middle school and high school. One option is, "I'm gonna come all day long to school." Um, the kids are gonna come all day long to school, but we're gonna do some sort of cohorting. So, some way of making sure kids aren't mixing as much as they do on a regular school day. So, at the high school, that means having a straight block, meaning they have four classes every day for a whole semester, instead of having cla- four classes one day and four classes another, and having a total of eight classes. At the middle school, it'll look a little bit different. It might look more like, um, core classes being, um, structured in, in cohorts, but then specials would be a little different, because not everybody takes world languages, not everybody takes band. So, that part would be, look a little bit different. Then, the other option, again, for in-person, was kids coming to school for middle school and high school, staying with one teacher for a half a day, Monday through Friday, and say, a group of 15 students, and working on all of their classes online, but with the support of a teacher being in the classroom. So, again, they're coming in, 15 students, 8 to, 8 to 11:30, in the same classroom. They don't co-mingle with any other group. They're working on their online instruction for that time, half-day, um, Monday through Friday. So, this was a question, again, that just pertained to middle school and high school staff, and when asked that question, the green indicates, um, staff that are interested in all-day in-person, but again, with some of those limited co-mingling of students. And the blue is a half-day with one teacher, which is really a virtual model with the support of a teacher in the classroom. And that's what the blue stands for. Um, this is another similar question to what we asked the Guardians. "As it relates to students physically returning to school, which factors would help you feel more comfortable as an instructor? Please check all that apply." So, again, uh, uh, obviously, many of them are important. It's hard to pick out one or two, but the sanitizing, uh, sanitizing supplies and classroom and other, the, other areas being sanitized came out very high, along with, um, having of social distancing and masking as well. So, um, just kind of helps you see where the highest levels of concern are. All right, any questions specific to the staff survey data?
So, one piece of information I would add is, when we look at our district, uh, 67% of our families took this survey. Um, and again, we didn't give them a long window. It went all Friday, and we asked to have it done by Monday. Um, I know I had a, a few emails about people like, "Oh, I missed the, the window." Um, and 72% of our staff, um, took the survey as well. So, it kinda gives you an idea, too. Sometimes when you look at percentages, that's one of the questions, like, how many actual people took the survey? Um, so, that kinda gives you an idea of, of the survey results, and, and it's a pretty good representation of, of our families and of our staff. Um, the next point, or part of this, is just to kinda look at current recommendations. Um, again, I am in Dane County superintendent's calls once a week, Columbia County superintendent's calls every other week, statewide superintendent's calls. Um, and just listening and reading and all the information that I get, uh, some of the thing, and I, and I didn't hit all of the recommendations, obviously. But if I look at the current recommendations from the CDC, uh, Wisconsin Department of Health Services, Columbia County Public Health, and Public Health Madison Dane County, um, social distancing, six feet is, you know, is what we've been hearing everywhere, as great as extent possible, which is really difficult to do in a school, right? It's very difficult for our kids to stay six feet apart. It's very difficult. Um, on a busing, uh, we can't keep them six feet apart, um, for us to do it financially. And so, that's a really difficult thing for us. Um, facial coverings are strongly encouraged by, uh, the Wisconsin Department of Human Services and by Columbia County. Uh, obviously, Dane County has a masking requirement for anybody over the age of five. And when you look at the CDC recommendations, um, that, it's one of those things they say should be implemented, um, if you're coming back to school. Um, other protective measures need to be in place as well, like, teaching kids to hand-washing hygiene, making sure we have cleaning protocols, working with staff and students on screening, and teaching them about the symptoms, and staying home when they're ill, um, those type of things. Um, schools need to be prepared to accommodate students who are unable to attend in person for whatever reason. Um, if it's a health reason, or if they, they just don't feel comfortable coming back. Um, and then, schools need to be prepared for change based on, you know, changing factors. As, as we've talked about last week and this week, it, COVID information seems to change on a weekly basis, and sometimes on a daily basis, um, and what the recommend, because again, it's, you know, it's such a new thing, you know, and so, we're working our way through that. Um, so, again, implications of these school requirements, um, that current information on our spread of COVID in both of our, in both counties that we're in, um, and looking at the guidance from the CDC, Wisconsin Department of Health Services, Columbia County and Dane County, or Public Health Madison Dane County, make it difficult to envision a full traditional model as we see it. Even when we talk about traditional model with safety precaution, it's not the traditional model that we lived in, in February, right? The traditional model now is kids stay in a classroom, and they're in that classroom. They're not inter, you know, uh, interacting with other kids, um, in other classrooms. Um, and for that, the reasons for that is if, if you have somebody who, who's ill, um, you then can quarantine a class of 15 or 20 and a teacher versus, like, at the high school, if, if you were in a full block or AB block, and you find out somebody has been ill, you may be taking out 80 to 120 kids and eight staff members, um, out of a picture because of they're quarantined because of a positive test. So, it's trying to cohort those numbers. So, any thought of us being in kind of a traditional model like how we started last year, it just isn't possible. Um, our state and both counties are trending in the wrong direction right now. Um, concerning, and obviously, other places have noticed that, as we said, Chicago, New York are quarantining our travelers. Um, there is some concern regarding consistency, uh, consistency of delivery model, right? If, it's very difficult for kids to work online. It's very difficult for them to work blended. Um, but it's gonna be more difficult if we're yanking them back and forth, and we don't have a time to plan for that, and families don't have time for, plan for that. So, that's one of the concerns as well, as we look at these models. Um, so, it's, it's really looking at, at those. So, we shared, um, you know, four instructional models at the last board meeting, and just for the people who are online. Um, the four models we shared were online learning guidelines, uh, with some enhancements. So, like, in the spring, when we had online learning, we absolutely had to shut buildings down. It was state-ordered. Um, if we go to online now, we would do online, but we could still bring small groups of kids in who maybe needed additional help, or, um, you know, for social motion reasons, or different things. We could work on bringing small groups of kids in at all different levels, uh, to work with staff. Uh, blended learning model with in-person safety guidelines, uh, that is bringing in students, uh, two days a week. Monday, Tuesday, half the students come in, the other half are at home doing, at-home activities. Wednesday, we're doing a deep clean of the building and doing some planning. Thursday, Friday, the other half of those kids come in, um, and the other half are at home doing at-home activities. Uh, a traditional model with safety precautions is kinda what I just got done talking about, like, the kids are coming in, but we're staggering their starts. Um, we're marking, like, the one-way hallways. It's like you go and, um, go to a quick trip in town. They have marks where you're six feet apart. Um, and it would not look the same. Uh, we would, you'd have the opportunity to, to work with kids, and absolutely, um, I think, everybody in a perfect world, obviously, that's a preferred setting. That's how we have school. Um, but again, this virus, the hope of this virus going away is not, it's not gonna happen. It's, it's here. Uh, so, and then, we had a staff, um, share an in-person, online model at the 612 level, um, which is why we included in the survey, was, you know, the idea of high school and middle school is really hard, because kids mix classes, and they, uh, as Ms. Loken said, they, they take band and they take choir. So, even if you keep them together for all their core classes, well, now, some kids are taking Spanish, so now you're mixing with a whole other group of kids, or you're, um, taking band, you're mixing with a whole other group of kids. So, we looked at an in-person, online model where kids could come in, but they would sit with a staff member, and they'd get their things online, but then there would be somebody helping them. But that's a half-day model, because we would need half-day for that staff member to be working with kids, but then that other half of the day for them to be putting together online materials and things for the following day for the next, for the students. Um, so those were the four models we went over. And, I don't know, Maureen, can you pull up that, um, that same document? So, really what I see, um, in looking at, if you go down, screen down a little bit, um, to the page 30, the reopening schools...
Way down, way down.
Yeah, way down.
Your mouse only goes so fast.
Yeah. I've talked a lot. Keep going.
Just trying to take all your notes, too.
One more. Oh, there you go, this right there. So, reopening schools. So, one of the ways, I guess, I, in, in trying to frame this for the board to have this discussion, is we are reopening schools. We were totally shut down by the state. Um, and looking at the different steps we need to take to reopen schools. Um, now, the board can decide where they wanna jump in, in these steps. We don't have to follow them in order. Um, but I tried to put them in, um, probably the least, uh, health-wise, if you're looking at health and COVID, the one that's probably the safest, um, and then went from, in that level. So, step one is a fully online instructional model provided by Lodi educators with targeted in-person supports, which I just talked about. It's similar to what we're doing right now. So, you heard a couple parent, parents talk about summer school and how that's going well. Um, but that's a small group of kids, right? We're bringing in, um, not big class sizes, a smaller group of kids, and it is working well. There's some feedback on things we can do better, and that's the idea, right? Um, we did some of that stuff with, um, our athletes this summer, too. Like, we brought them in just so we could practice, like, our screening mechanisms, and how this would work with masks and different things of that nature. So, we've been trying to work on that. Uh, step two would be a blended learning model for 4K through 5, and 612 online instruction. So, looking at the research, um, you know, kids 4K through 5, um, don't transmit this virus as much as kids who are over the age of 10. Um, so then, you'd move your middle school and, and high school maybe to an online where the younger kids would be in-person, or, I'm sorry, blended. So, two days, in for two days, um, and then at home doing activities for two days. Step three would be looking at a blended model, um, for 4K through 5, and then that 612 in-person cohorted online. Again, that would be having people, having your 612 kids coming in, but they would be in groups of 15, and, uh, they wouldn't interact with any other kids, and they'd be doing everything online. But they would have somebody there helping them on the side, a guy on the side. Uh, step four is more of a traditional instructional cohort model for 4K through 5, where they're really, again, now they're, they're back in school, uh, full-time, but they're really cohorted. They're just in those small groups. Um, 612 probably still stays in that, you know, online, uh, model, um, where they're in-person. Step five, a traditional instructional cohort model, 4K through 12. So, again, now you're looking at, are we doing, um, at the middle school and high school, now you're interacting with more kids. you're interacting with more kids, right? And then step six is back to where we were last fall, that kind of traditional model, that we don't need to look at student cohorting. So I, that's kind of I see as the possible steps. Now, can you tweak that as a board and come up with something that's a different combination? Absolutely. I just is trying to kind of put that together for the board. And really, I think the reason I did it was like, if you start somewhere, then it gives you a spot to go, right? If we start at step four, then we know if things start getting worse with COVID, okay, we're going to jump to step three, or if things getting better, we're going to step five. It kind of gives you a progression, so to speak. So the next slide talks about like criteria for moving between steps. So the Wisconsin Department of Health and Human Services is developing a matrix for moving for instructional models. I was hoping they would have it done by this meeting, but I called them and they wouldn't get it done just for me. Or for Lordi. They are working on, it's supposed to come out within the next couple of weeks, right? But we put together a sample matrix of kind of what that would look like or what we were thinking. We used data from Dane County, Columbia County, Wisconsin Hospitals Association to kind of put this things together. So if you scroll down, the next one is kind of timeline for looking at changing steps would be, we look at what step we're starting at tonight, remain to that current step until the public health criteria is met. Review for both Columbia County and Dane County and move then this next step two weeks after criteria is met and if criteria is met, right? We wouldn't make a change unless we were forced to overnight, right? That's what happened in the spring. And it could happen again where we're forced, but the idea, but if we're going to move to another level, we would try to give parents a couple of weeks' notice to do that. The next slide kind of gives you a sample of what that might look like, right? So if the risk for COVID is low, you know, there's no evidence of community spread. If you look at the light blue on the left-hand side, you know, then you look at the action, social distancing and risk mitigation protocols are followed within our traditional with safety precautions plan. And as you move to the right, the risk level becomes higher with COVID. And we look at different factors from the counties and why we would make those decisions. And in the bottom, you start looking at which actions we would take. We would still, you know, when we'd start looking at blended or online. And then obviously the way to the far right is online schooling, we're at severe risk and maybe even shut down by state or county at that level. So I see something like this as something we're going to have to put together and work, again, we did this, we are not experts in public health. So we're waiting for Department of Health Services to give us something like that. And I know the superintendent's groups, we've been pushing for that. And I know actually are, usually somebody from public health joins the Dane County Superintendent's meeting. They're not going to be there on Thursday because they're working on this with the Department of Health and Human Services, so.
Before you go on.
Yeah.
Okay, stay on that. So I just want to make it clear, you've said it six times, I just want to make it clear one more time. This is not what we are following. This is just a sample.
Right.
Of what it will look like or where we're going to go. Because online across the nation, people are coming out with these.
Yep.
And people are upset or not upset or wherever you fall on it. Just be clear that this is not what we're following, this is just a sample until we get one that we are following.
Yeah. I just wanted, I wanted to give the board and community an idea of like, this is what we were looking at. I want something a little more robust from, again, Department of Health and Human Services, and they have a lot of people working on this right now. And I appreciate Gene Winter and Mike Pisani spent a lot of time in researching this and putting this together, and I think they did a phenomenal job. But also, they know the shortcomings, it's just not, you know, we don't have the resources to put that together. The other piece that needs to be part of the conversation at some point as well, and haven't been done today, but we also got to talk about co-curricular activities at some point. So WIA guidance on, that came out just this past week, pushed back football, soccer and volleyball seasons, what they consider high-risk sports until, moderate to high-risk sports until September 7th. So those seasons have been delayed because football was supposed to start next Monday, so now it's been pushed back. Tennis, swimming and cross-country are considered lower-risk activities and they can start on August 17th. The WIA is exploring the possibility of having some fall sports play in the spring. I think I shared this at the last meeting we had. A group from, administrators from southwest part of the state put together a plan of moving fall sports to the spring. So the border control tasked the WIA to look at that, so I don't know if that's going to happen or not. So there is, Dane County's guidance right now is there's no competition for moderate-risk volleyball, soccer or high-risk sports, football. There can be modified competitions for low-risk sports, cross-country or swim and tennis. Practices can be held, but they need to be modified. An indoor is maximum of 10 students, outdoor maximum of 25. They allow some what's called potting. So like we did this for some of our football contact days and some of the volleyball thing, where you may have had more than 25 kids, but these 25 kids stayed together like one end of the field and these 25 kids stayed together on the other end of the field and they're considered separate pods. Or you put the screen down and this 10 kids are on this side of the curtain and these 10 are on this side. Then you can have more, but they have to be considered a pod of some sort, kind of like the cohorting that we were talking about for students. Columbia County right now has given no guidance on co-curriculars. They're deferring to WIA and Department of Health and Human Services, and Department of Health and Human Services is really deferring to WIA. And again, it's really a difficult position for all them to be in because, right, it's it's different. It's a statewide organization, so COVID's not hitting every part of the state the same. So, but that, I mean, there's question, I mean, these seasons are supposed to start of what we want to do with seasons and co-curriculars. So finally, what I think is, I see as the next steps is we need to decide where we want school to be on September 1st. Which one of those steps do you want to start at? Decide your expectations for staff based on that decision, and then decide co-curriculars based on that decision. Because I think that that first decision is going to help figure out those next two. And not that those decisions all have to be made tonight, but the first one does, and that will drive all the rest.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Julie, you added a bunch of stuff. Did you want to go through any of it or it's just?
Yeah, well, it was mainly just informational websites, but the one question I had or started thinking of was the local demographics of Dane County, and I included Sauk County and Columbia County, and I got on the census.gov quick facts table. So if you click on that, there's all types of comparisons between Sauk County, Dane County and Columbia County. And then I kind of put together a little spreadsheet of what I thought were interesting facts that kind of go into what we're looking at here. You know, like the, Vince already talked about the population differences. Dane County's 10 times the population of Columbia County. Population per square mile, Dane County's at 407.70. Columbia and Sauk run about 74 per square mile, people per square mile. Percentage of the population under 18 years is relatively constant for all three counties, roughly around 20. Dane County's at 20.20, Sauk at 22.70, Columbia at 21. And then over 65 years population is actually lower in Dane County at 14.2 and Sauk 19.10, Columbia 18.40. The one thing that I was looking at, you know, is the next line items they have are households with computers and households with broadband service, internet service. Now, I realize that we provide, we have gotten the hotspots, I mean, we pretty much have some form of Chromebook, Apple Pad, iPad for all of our students, but it is, you know, the fact is, is that a lot of them are living in households that do not have computers and do not normally have broadband service. So when they're working on these computers at home and encounter a technical difficulty, is there someone in that household that can help them with that? So I kind of see that as an issue, I guess, with online learning. So if we were to choose to do that, maybe we, I don't know how we would get a small group of parents or give parents assistance in that area. And then just the differences in high school education, percentage that have at least a high school education and then also a college education. And so there are big differences there with Dane County on the college education. Of course, it's a college town where the college education, percentage of the population that has at least a four-year degree is 50%, and then in Sauk and Columbia County, we're running at 23%. So I know personally as a parent, when my daughter reached high school math and matrices for that area, I have a four-year degree and I could not help her because I learned completely a different way. So again, it's pointing out some differences that we have, I guess, in our local county that become maybe some obstacles to really having a good online program, I guess is the way I would do it. So, next thing, just a little bit, just taking, and this is just gleaming, popping on that map, and I think Adam had shots of that map in his presentation. But, so I was curious, what are the statistics on positive cases per population, not per people tested? And so you can see on this chart that the positive cases per the population in each county are well under, like Dane County runs .723, and this is for the entire span of living in COVID. Sauk is running .453 and Columbia .342. And now this was taken from like last, I want to say Saturday, I worked on this over the weekend. So these may not be exactly the numbers of today, but it is a representation of that. And then I put in negative cases for the population and deaths for the population. So the other thing, and I didn't get a chance to put it there, then I, I was thinking, well, what does a typical influenza pneumonia season or influenza season look like? There's not a lot of good information, but DHS did have a chart showing a 14-week total of 2019-2020 influenza season, and there were 167 influenza deaths and 2,005 pneumonia deaths, for a total of 2,172 over 14 weeks. And currently, this, I mean, it's gone up, but last weekend it was at 893 for COVID over a longer time span, which represents about 41% of what we deal with for influenza respiratory diseases on a normal, normal year, so. And that's really, I just wanted to take a different perspective because I think we get caught up in the percent of positives and they're going higher and as time goes on, the curve is going up. Well, it's going to because there's more cases, more time has elapsed. And so it's all about interpreting the data, I guess, or looking, looking at it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions here, Julie? Right, and then I have a presentation. Bring that one up, Mo. When I put this together, I didn't have Vince's and Vince did cover some of this, so I'll skip past some of that stuff. That's just the title slide, where the data comes from. So could you make it just a little smaller so I can see the whole thing? Right, right to the right there, right there. And then another one. Yeah, so we can see, there we go. So as Vince already said, we're going in the wrong direction, right? It's twice as bad now as when it was in the spring. And these numbers, last time I presented this, there was ample evidence through news reports that the numbers are not correct and they're under-reported. Researchers have gone through those numbers case by case, and in the United States, they came back and said that the actual rate of these numbers should be 5.3% higher and the death should be 1% higher in the United States. So again, this is the whole United States. It's not, it's bad, but it's not directly at us because we're not the whole United States. So you can go to the next slide. Because it's way worse in other parts of the country than it is here. I mean, you can see how red it is down in the South. And this changes all the time, right? But it's still been bad down in the South for a long time. If you, I need the title though. So half of all the cases in Wisconsin, Vince covered this, have happened in the last five weeks, right? It's going in the wrong direction. We're right now sitting at about a 7% average on positivity rate for cases that come back. And in the beginning, when we closed down, they said in order to open up anything, the CDC said this and the White House said this, you'd need to be down to 1.5% positivity rate. We never even got down to, I mean, the lowest we ever hit was 2.8% when we opened up, and now we're at 7. So this did not come through, unfortunately. So on the CDC website, they talk about what happens when you open things up, and this case is not on there. This is one of our allies, Israel, and they had their infection rate, it's marked on there as May 17th, down to almost zero. And they started their schools on May 17th, and then because, according to them, because they opened those schools, right, they suddenly had 1,400 diagnosed with COVID in that last month. 47% were infected into schools, and now they have 2,000 students, teachers and staff that have it, and 28,000 people quarantined. The picture that's on there, which I wish you could see better, is it just shows that people don't wear masks properly. So there's two adults in that picture who don't have their masks on and three kids who don't have their masks on, even when it's required, they're still not going to wear a mask, so. Or wear it properly. So if you scroll to the next one. Right, right? So we are not Nashville, Tennessee, and this is a video, it's not going to play in the PDF. But the place where COVID is increasing greatly right now is in the demographic of young people. So it's kids who have just gotten out of high school up to age 40, and this is a video of just going down the street where they have a mandatory mask order in place and almost no one has a mask on. And it is in that age group if you look at the people in the video. I showed this last time I presented, I didn't redo these numbers. It does depend on where you are, right? So if you're in northern Wisconsin, it's a whole different thing. We are currently not quote-unquote in a hotspot in Columbia County, but we're right next to other hotspots. So if you go to the next slide, we sort of talked about this, right? It depends on where you are, like we're right on the edge, but we have a large amount of people who travel to places that are hotter than us, right? We do have people traveling to places that aren't as hot as us or are in lower risk, but the majority of the people who are in our area do end up going, not the majority, a large percentage end up going to Costco or Menards or Woodman's or Madison in some way for work or for other reasons. So it's not just about who gets COVID-19 or if they die, it also has long-term health implications. These keep getting stronger and stronger as we learn more about the virus. And it is, again, mainly in people who are older than 65, but it does incur on a regular basis on people who are under 65, right? So you end up with long-term acute respiratory distress syndrome, severe cases of lung damage and long-term shortness of breath. and long-term shortness of breath, impaired lung function, damage to your heart, kidneys and brain. It also infects your brain stem and your central nervous system for many people. And there's a higher amount of blood clots showing up in young adults. Next slide. The thing that we haven't covered, we've covered in the past, but we haven't talked about tonight, is asymptomatic cases of COVID-19. And so the problem with COVID versus something like influenza is people are spreading it without knowing they have it. They have no, you can do all the temperature checks you want, you're going to have COVID and not have a fever, you're going to spread COVID. That's a big problem, and it happens with children too. So the next one is very disturbing. No, 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 I still need that slide. One in five or 20% of the tests, so if five people go in to get a COVID test, researchers took those COVID tests and then re-sampled them using a very long drawn-out procedure of DNA testing, and they found that one in five people who were told they did not have COVID actually had COVID-19. This was a very small study, and it's not something you can extrapolate to all the testing we're doing today, but it's incredibly alarming that one in five tests may come back wrong if you have COVID. And as Vince already talked about, children age 10 to 19 are spreading it as well as adults, even when they don't show symptoms. And I really, if we do decide to open in some sort of open method, right, either face-to-face or blended, go to the next slide, I really do think we need to ask the people who are working in the buildings, the actual employees, do they have any of these issues that the CDC is going to put, says is going to put them at an increased risk of a severe illness from COVID-19? Because they more than likely are going to be exposed. The numbers we're looking at for cases and deaths and all that stuff is because we're in lockdown. People are not going out to work, they're staying in their home and working. Not everybody, but a large percentage. Schools are not open, kids are not intermingling. So the reason, the numbers are going in the wrong direction, but they're going in the wrong direction at a slower pace than if we open stuff back up. That's the biggest problem. And then there's one more slide. So it's not just high risk, it's also increased risk. And so there's a whole bunch of stuff that, this is for children, so I would guess we have very few children in our district with this, these types of conditions, and hopefully we would find them and make sure they are not coming if we open up. And then the last slide. Where it is? There it is. This is the slide for adults who are, might be at an increased risk according to the CDC. And so it's smoking, asthma, pregnancy, type 1 diabetes, and a bunch of other stuff that's on there. I think that's the last slide, right? Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions on any of that?
I just have a couple of comments. This is Shelley Pear.
Sure.
We had a couple people that suggested they could help with technology, two different people. My suggestion to the people or any other people that would like to help would be to call the district office so that you could work with someone there to figure out how you can help. And the other comment is, doesn't really have to do with this, a lot of people were not happy with dealing online when we had to shut the schools down and just get out. I want people to think differently about online learning because we have a whole bunch of, we have enough time to figure things out before we get shut down. And I say that with the thought process of we had to deal with it, we're going to have to deal with it in some ways or another, and so now we can prepare, deal with it. So for those people, the children and the parents as well, you have to think of this as a different way to start the year. Don't go back to the disappointments you had last year when we couldn't figure things out because it was such a sudden shock to all of us. So if you're thinking, oh, I've got to deal with that online again, we have more things that we can do better this next time. So that's my two cents worth. And all of the people that are popping up there on the bottom of my screen, there's a lot of questions coming up. Again, those should, questions should go to the district office. There's a lot of people asking questions that are popping up on my screen. So those questions should go to the district office. I could not write them all down and I can't read my own handwriting anyway, so.
Shelley, all of those questions, all of those comments in the chat will be saved. They'll all get you.
Okay. Perfect. I'm out, Shelley out.
Mo, can you bring up Vince's slide deck where you had the different steps? Next one.
Who's down toward the bottom there?
Down to the bottom.
I think she is at the bottom.
What's around me? There we go.
You can probably zoom in a little on that.
If you go up a couple more.
It's bigger, yeah.
It's bigger if you go up a couple. That one's part of a different slide, so one more, there you go.
There you go.
So one of the things to think about, right, and it's been brought up in the beginning of the comments when we first had public input, people feel, some people feel really strongly about this on both ways, right? And there are definitely advantages and disadvantages for every single one of these models. Having kids in school is, I think, what everyone would prefer, sitting here and online. I mean, if all things were equal, we'd all want to be in school because that's why we have our kids in school and we're doing in-person schooling. It's the most effective for us, it helps with social, emotional issues with our kids. We're able to connect with them, we're able to, you know, help them when they're struggling. It's, it just works so much better. If I see Adam struggling with a problem, I can just walk across the room and deal with it. Sometimes it's hard to tell online. But that's also the most dangerous for us, right? If we talk about COVID. And then so as you go down that list from step six all the way back up towards step one, that instruction is still there, it becomes a little more difficult, right? And it's not as robust as it would be if we were all in person. Will it be better than it was in the spring if we get to online? Absolutely, right? We've learned some things, we will work on that and work on those expectations. We spent some time in the spring, at the end of the school year with staff, we would start the school year with staff, having conversations and looking at how we are providing online education to students. And, you know, last year we, it was, here you go, right? We left school on a Friday and didn't come back on Monday, right? We didn't even know enough to have kids take stuff home with them, right? We didn't know where we'd go. That's just the way it worked. So we would have to work through all of those pieces. So that's the, that's the hard part, right? I've talked to this board before, not as superintendent, but about the hard part about being on a board of education is you have right, you know, the decision between right and right. You can make an argument for any one of these decisions. That's the hard part, right? You have to think about looking at the most up-to-date data and what is in the best interest of our students, what's the best interest of our staff, what's the best interest of our family, and what's the best interest of the community, and try to, and try to do that. And number one is the best interest of our students, what is best for them. And that's a difficult decision. It really is. And if you'd asked my recommendation three weeks ago, it would be different than it is today, right?
We'll get to that.
Yeah. So I'm just saying, that's just the way it is. I mean, so, you know, I put together a 19-page document that year with you, you know, talking about a preferred model, and things have changed since then, and they could change again. One of the biggest concerns I have with Dane County's numbers is in three weeks, a bunch of students are going to move back into UW-Madison, right? And those numbers are going to spike back up because I have college kids at home, and they may be pretty good about group of 10, 15 people, but it's now 10, 15 people they haven't seen in a while and from all over the state. So.
Well, I think you bring up some good things. It is, it would be nice, I mean, we've all been thinking about this as you for, well, since we made the decision to
Right.
...close the schools. It would be great if we could boil it down even to just doing what's best for kids.
Right.
But that's a complex issue because we are also an employer. We have a responsibility to protect our employees. Right now, there is no protections. So if we do something that is deemed incorrect, we can be held liable for those things, both for students and for teachers and staff. We have a whole busing issue that is so complex and so costly to even attempt to try to figure out, and then all the stuff that we've already talked about, but how do you social distance? How do you keep kids? And the thing I keep thinking about, you brought up, is that it's not the school we knew. Everybody that's calling me and writing me emails and talking to me on the street is saying, I just want my kids back in school. And I explain to them what I think school would look like then, and they're like, yeah, that wouldn't be any fun. But they would still get the social, emotional part of it, and I agree with that. And I think there is a large portion of that. So I, I think it's just important that it's easy to boil this down to one issue that people send us emails and talk to us on the street and do that about. There's a lot we're juggling here, and I hope we do it justice. I'm smiling underneath my thing though. I'm smiling at you.
Well, I can tell there's huge advantages to wearing these masks after the fact that you can still see my eyes. If it wasn't for that, we could get away with a lot.
Yeah. I wish we had these for the superintendent.
Interviews.
Interviews, because we were told we couldn't make facial expressions or nod our head, and
Yeah, we should.
That was really hard. That was like. So how do we do this?
Well, before we do this, so Angie and Barb, so Shelley's talked, Steven's talked, I've talked, Julie's talked. Angie, you want anything to say, or Barb, you want anything to say?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to say a couple things. One is that I believe that no matter what we decide, some families want a virtual all online, and there should be an option, a good option for them if they want to have a virtual all online choice for their family. Seems like there is a large enough percentages of people who feel strongly that that is the best thing for their family. And I know we've been discussing this, and now we're starting to see the numbers who would pick that, you know, no matter what model we would be going with. I think it is only reasonable that people be allowed to choose that if they feel that is the safest and the best for their family. I also just feel really strongly that when we are talking about putting our staff in situations that puts them at risk, that's a real strong consideration that we need to have. We talked about cohorting and putting students in small groups, and when we feel that we can have students in buildings, I think that when we look at that cohorting, as we've discussed, it makes school really different. But it is a way to get students back into the building at some point if we think we can do that. And in the high school, that would be really small groups of 15 if we can manage that. I also like when we started talking about the different stages where if we do start off, for instance, at an all online, that we are reassessing as conditions change about having some of the youngest children to come back, we have more space, social education, you know, just the fact that we can start with one model and then thoughtfully look at the data, look at the situation as we go along. I would prefer that if I was a parent, I was a parent, I am a parent, my son, I did experience the, they called online in the spring and had concerns, as many parents did. I do know, I feel strongly we need to, again, whichever model we are picking, that our virtual component is excellent. I think that with what a school district, we can meet the challenge of providing the best virtual experience that can be made. It's not the same as in person, but now we have time, now we have motivation, now we have dedication, we have our entire, you know, staff who would be highly motivated to make that as good an option as possible. And I think that putting our resources behind that is important, I think, no matter which direction we head right now. That's it.
Thank you. You want to add anything, Barb? You don't have to. Here's your opportunity.
On the spot.
I'm putting it all into my head. I mean, I think just agreeing with pretty much everything that's been said. I agree with Vince when we closed in the spring. I, as a teacher, assumed we would come back at some point. I never thought we would be like leaving on Friday and never coming back. So I think there's definitely, we've learned from that, we can prepare and do much better online. And I like that summer school is showing that we could bring in some small groups kids, because I know like special ed is very difficult to do through the online process. I had a student, my own son, I mean, it was really super hard socially, emotionally for him. And I've been trying to prepare him like the last three weeks of going, things are changing drastically, like you need to start accepting that this might not happen. So that's scary to me, but it's much more scary to me for him to get sick and bring it home. And I think along like, I personally watched this, you know, evolve from one side of the world and come into us. It's hard to look at what's happening down south and seeing that kids are getting sick and kids are being hospitalized and not think like that couldn't happen here. So that has been pretty concerning. And I think too, I'm a little concerned about how much parents understand being in the building, what that really actually looks like with your child in one spot, you know, all day, basically at a desk all day, eating lunch in that desk in an assigned part of the playground, social distance. It's not like we're coming back to school like we typically would. I mean, that also has a social, emotional impact of coming back to what you expect to come back to, and it's vastly different.
Phil, did you want to add anything?
Trying to pick and choose what I want to say.
Never stopped you before.
Yeah, but, you know, normally it was just you harassing me. Some people fear what they don't know. I'm not in that place. I've had a chance to cross paths with COVID up close and personal. The one thing I haven't heard anybody do is step out and say which, which, Ms. Palmer, if you could put the one with the numbers back up there.
I was kind of trying to give everybody a chance to say anything they wanted to say.
I understand.
And it helps me feel out where you're at.
So the truth of the matter is, I'm on number three.
Well, you don't have to feel them out anymore. You got it.
And that gives me the most. It covers, it checks the most boxes for me. I've read all this stuff, I'm familiar with it. Absolutely offer people online. We're going to have to. This is a starting point, y'all remember?
Yeah.
We're going to have to try to figure out if the blended is like two days a week and how we're doing busing. We're going to have to go through some details, but I'm asking for it to get strong consideration so we have a starting place. The other thing is, I mentioned earlier that the negative tests aren't coming back as fast as the positive tests. And I'm sorry, I can't remember where I got it, but I didn't get it from Google.
No, there was a, Dane County specifically had an issue that they have now corrected.
Backlog of 17,000 negative test results. So we're not reported.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the other thing is, if we start out with something like this, we are going to have to come up with a tripping point.
Of course, on any of these, wherever we start, we'll have a tripping point.
We got to have a tripping point.
That was that color-coded table. That was that color coded table that Vince was showing.
Oh, yeah, I understand. But we, I I I want the tripping point discussed so we know what it is or some general.
Right, that was the general, you saw the general. We'll get more specific on that after the health department tells us more specifics.
Well, they're like the Department of Public Instruction, they're looking for a place to hide.
I would agree with you on some some of those points. But um, when the health department, the people who are tasked, who have the best knowledge, give us that, then we'll have that to look at. That's coming.
The other thing is, our potential opening for school is more than thirty days away. Thirty days is a long time. I feel like we've learned a lot with this versus where we started. And going back to the idea of people being for me, I mustn't allow this to be such an emotional decision. Because I know from having sat in this seat for a long time, then I don't make good decisions and I see the board doesn't. I just, I just feel like it would give us the best, it would give us a starting point. And if we've got a backpedal, we got a backpedal.
Right, so the the problem I see with step three is that we can't protect our staff. The staff, the actual adults that come into the building to teach the children, the risk is high for them right now based on the data that we have.
So the one point I wanted to make real quick before we get into the debate thing, because this really hasn't, has nothing to do with what Bill said or with what you're saying, is that we do know that there have been and and are students in our district in the ten to twelve age range that have contracted, con, yeah, have it, have COVID and who have spread it to their parents. Because I I just want to get that fact out there because we keep talking about hypotheticals and it happens down there. It it's in our district. Not in great numbers, but it is in our district, so.
I would agree.
I just want to say that. Now we can go talk about all those other things.
And I'll just fill out for that. So the the problem I have with it backpedaling is people get sick, right? So like, that's when we backpedal, like
Well, I'm I'm
No, and I'm not trying to go after you, I'm just saying.
I'm looking at the aspect of between now and the first of September, when we would start school. Some of the statistics we have are not an accurate reflection of what's going on. You can always skew statistics one way or another.
Right, but the statistics we're looking at are purposely not skewed. They're they're not generated by news outlets or places where people are saying, well, if we bend it this way or we bend it this way. It's done by professional scientists who are not in the in the get no benefit from bending or skewing.
And they're not trying to sell a story, they're just presenting facts.
It's just straight up fact.
I was after a thirty day plan is what I was after.
Right, but the the one thing that I would counter that with is parents need to know what we're doing in September now. Teachers need to know that, need to know that now, so that we do that in September first.
What what do you mean by thirty day plan, Bill?
Well, basically, this would be a thirty day plan. Okay, thirty-two, if you will. And once we would step out and draw that line in the sand, we're gonna get feedback from parents saying, I'm going to send my kids or I'm not going to send my kids. We're gonna get feedback from teachers saying, I want to work or I don't want to work. That real time information might be part of the tripping point to make us go virtual. Now, I I don't want to do the emotional thing. We've got to tighten this up so we can make good decisions.
The issue I run into, Bill, as I look at this, is staffing. Right, it's the rabbit hole that I I continually come back to. Is what is going to happen? First of all, I have staff who've already requested um to work remotely. Right, so we're kind of started that process, like if you don't think you can come back, tell me why, right? And so we're gonna walk through that process. Maybe I have a preexisting health condition, maybe um I have children who go to school in another district who now has said they're going online. So that's one piece of that, and some of those will qualify for certain leaves. For example, if um the Wanaquie went virtual, um, online instruction. If I have a staff member here who has a child who goes to Wanaquie, they now qualify for twelve weeks of extended family medical leave because their kid's school is closed. Where they may be able to provide education if they're at home with their children, but now they have, they can take this leave and a paid leave, right, that came with the first stimulus package. So that is a tripping point for me, if you're talking about tripping points. Um, the second tripping point is going to be staff who get sick or who are quarantined. And once they get quarantined, I I don't know what I'm gonna have for a sub pool. Right? That's gonna, I know we've had a couple of subs who've said already that I'm not subbing. And we're already short subs. And as we get closer to school, that that may vary, you know, maybe we'll pick some up, maybe we won't. But that's the other part that concerns me is I, if I lose a a staff members, member or members, if they get sick or they're just quarantined, you know, can they teach from home? Can they do online? If we're online, they can do that. If they, if we're in traditional, do we allow them to teach from home and do I hire somebody to sit in that classroom? You know, it's that staffing part that really is the rabbit hole for me, that really, all the other ones, there's tons of them. But that's a big one, right? I just can't get my hands around where I go from that, right? We've already talked, I mean, all three of us have talked, like, there are pretty good chance that we're all subbing this year. If we're in any type of blended or traditional model. Um, it's same with all the other administrators and counselors and things like that. That that's the part I struggle with, like, how am I gonna make that work in a way that's meaningful for kids? So that's one of my major tripping points, to use what you're talking about.
And if we have to step back, you still may be out those teachers if they're actually sick.
Oh, right.
Right, so it's it's not like, it's like you said, is once, once, once we've got into that mode and we've exposed people, going back is really hard. It's it's almost at that point like school shut down, or some portions of school are shut down, which is the worst possible thing that we can have happen.
Right, and and again, that's one of the things that, if I'm exposed, are you asking somebody to then teach from home even though we're in a traditional model, but now their class is online? Are you asking them to do that even though, you know, they, again, they qualify for leave because they were quarantined? They don't have to teach from home. Um, and if they're having symptoms, obviously, we don't, don't want to teach them. That's 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 a heavy lift for anybody if you're not feeling well, well enough to come to school. Um, and the other piece is when you talk about influenza and all the other things that are gonna come, like
They're gonna ask you.
How many people, yeah, we're asking all of our staff, and we struggle with it this summer, you know? You wake up and you're, you you don't just feel great, like, boy, should I stay home today? And we're asking people to stay home. Right, so people, because we have a lot of teachers and other people who come here on a daily basis who rarely take a sick day, even though there's times that they should. But they just, they they work and they they really have a passion for what they're doing and they believe what they're doing is important and they know that when there's sub in the room, it's not as good, that um, and they'll be here. And so it's, that's the other piece, is like
Well, I think you have that no matter what, right?
Right.
Like staff and kids.
Yep.
I mean, that's a very big trust factor you're putting in that people are gonna actually follow the guidelines. And it's very difficult as a teacher, how sick and all the prep that it takes with. And it's very hard to have to find arrangements for your kids when they're sick too. And I think taking emotion out of it, if you look at the statistics, I mean, look, we were low. We did shut down the state. The numbers dropped, we reopened, and now we're increasing significantly. I think it's a very difficult time then to say, yeah, let's open up more. Let's open up our schools when our numbers are going up.
Right, and if you look at the countries that did open up and open up successfully, their numbers were significantly down, right? They had controlled the spread, they had done the mitigation pieces. And their spread is down, and they were able to open up successfully um for the most part, with mitigation.
Contact tracing.
Yep.
There are some, limited, tiny bit.
There have been some, right, so.
I've got employees in Germany whose kids' schools just shut down again, because they were at like zero cases, opened the schools back up and it now we're not Germany, so I'm not saying.
But it's gonna happen regardless, right, just like influenza. Kids are gonna get sick.
Yeah.
I mean, regardless of what, we are gonna have kids who have COVID. We do have kids who have COVID, right? You just shut, um, and we're gonna have staff who have COVID. So that is a reality. To think that we're gonna have our kids together and that that's not gonna happen and that if we have a kid, a student who gets COVID, they are out, you know, for two weeks. And that teacher is out for two weeks. Unless they haven't had six foot of, that was said today in my county call, like unless, the best way to do it is to make sure you don't have, you're within six feet of a student, then that, they, then you won't have to go out and quarantine. Like, how do you teach and not get within six feet of a student? Right? Especially at our younger levels, right? I mean, even at our high school level, right? Somebody's struggling with something, you know, you reach over and you you're you're over there, over their shoulder.
I teach adults. At the university, I reach over and talk to them.
That's how you teach.
Same.
So that's the part that, that again, I continue to I can't wrap my head around how we're gonna step, and then and then we bounce, right? So then that comes back to the point I made before about consistency. Like, okay, we're online, whoop, this group of kids is now, I'm sorry, we're in person, whoop, this group of kids is now online. Or this school is now online. Or the whole district's now online for, you know, and now we haven't taken this month to plan for online instruction because we've been planning for blended instruction or we've been planning for, you know, our regular instruction, right? Because that's what two teachers plan.
And that's the part that's that that worries me, I mean, we're all, if we're in it for what's best for kids, then starting off with a plan that we can know, that we know we can hit. And that, I agree with Angie, we can raise the bar and we can, it's not gonna be the the spring again. It's, we're gonna be doing this right. But if we start with any other model and then something causes us to go backwards, we're back where we were in the spring, where we're not, we're a little better, because we did do some planning and we did do some things. But it's still, it's a shock, right? It's like, I'm in school, now I'm not in school. I would rather be cautious and and build and set markers and set measurements that says, when we get to point X, we're gonna check this and see where the numbers are at and see if we can come back or whatever. But it just, I I fear going backwards. I think backwards is the worst thing that can happen to us, because I I think what it really means in some cases is you may just be shutting down because you've infected too many people. The other thing is we keep talking like, and it is true, that there are people that are asymptomatic and there are people that don't not get sick. But the majority of the people that get it get like a very bad flu. Flu's not any fun to have. If it's a very bad flu, you're, I mean, it's not like you're gonna end up in hospital or anything like that, but you're not gonna feel like getting up and teaching kids or getting up and doing homework. You're, the people that I've talked to that had it said, no, I was in the bed trying to keep the chills away and
Well, and there's, you know, evidence out there that this, unlike a typical influenza, there's, we're starting now to see long term
Right, as you presented.
effects and damage. I mean, this isn't, we're not talking like pink eye is gonna spread through the building and we're gonna shut down for a couple of days.
I think the big thing is, we just don't know.
Well, the, I mean, yeah, right, so it's new for everybody. But all evidence that I've seen, or every, but ever, is there is an expectation that it is going to spike. Right, as we get into the fall year, so you look at like how UW system and things are doing in the school, a lot of them are trying, are private schools, especially trying to start early, get done before that Thanksgiving break, right? Which we can't do. But, you know, doing some of those things, uh, because they're anticipating that spike, that once you get everybody together and like right now, there's been, and I've had those emails too, it's like we've been traveling around, we're healthy. Most of the time, we're outside, right? We're not in real close quarters with anybody, even not been any social gatherings, most of the time, we're out, you know, and and instead of being in a building.
If you do get together, it's for a short time, not for a day or a half a day.
I think we will get better as a society. There are things we can put in place in buildings that make them safer. We will get more accustomed to wearing masks, which I think is a new normal. We will get vaccines, we will get better treatments, we will get all those stuff, and and it, life will go back to some sense of normal. I think the more as a society that we push that, the harder it makes those things to make a difference when they actually come online. And that's, it's the same for us. We could go make the buildings a lot safer if we had an infinite budget. We don't have an infinite budget. Uh, in fact, if we go to real, we're probably gonna have to spend our entire budget on busing.
Yeah, it, uh, budget wise, reopening would be very difficult. Um, just the things that we're gonna have to buy, busing, um, some of the other things, we're gonna have to staffing. We may need to look at staff, um, just so we can spread things out, so we can have somebody can supervise at lunches and classrooms and um, do those types of things. It it would be very difficult. Not that, again, that is not the reason not to do, we we will embrace that. All of these are very difficult. Uh, teaching wise would be easier is not the right word, but more familiar, obviously, with people in person, right? And I, you know, the outcomes would be better. I think our outcomes, if we go online or blended, will be better than they were when we did it in the spring. Absolutely, and the other piece is that we can bring small groups of kids in, right? So as we talked about, like, our kids with some special needs or our you know, our heritage speakers or just kids who aren't engaging. We can, we can bring them in, right, and use our bus company for some of those things, like go and get some kids and bring them in and bring them in small groups um, and provide some of that instruction in kids who aren't engaging. I also see like one of those models, um, like that that model, anytime we talk about kids, like it's six, twelve, being online, right, sitting, or sitting in, you know, coming in together, cohorting with a homeroom teacher. I haven't thrown that by my senior son yet. But there's a chance he'd go, why am I doing that? I can just do it at home. Right? Now I'm not exposed to anybody. But again, he's got, he's got more support than all of our students, not all of our students have that support, right? His mom's really a good parent, his dad, so so. His dad's always here.
So absentee.
So anyhow, but I'm just saying, you know, that's, that's not, he's not the kid we're worried about.
Right.
Right? Or my daughter, uh, I mean, I'm worried about him, and we've talked, I've talked to my wife about like, what do we, what do we have to do, what do we have to do differently in this, as well, right? I would, as a parent, would do different things for my kids coming up in the fall. And that might mean us as a school trying to help do some of those things. Like, here is a sample structured schedule for your child to try to follow for the day. These are some things they should do. Now, obviously, you can be flexible, blah, blah, here's a structure for them. Here's an idea, like, if you have some families that you get together with regularly, right, that this is your pod, you're
And their bubble.
You can get those three or four, you know, sixth graders together and connect them, so, you know, there is some of that socialization and they're working together, collaborating on some of those things, so it's not online, so doing some of those things as well and trying to help facilitate that. Working on providing like, who can we provide as tutors and things for kids who are really struggling and doing that? So that's a role that we can play in, if we start, if we look to an online model, we can start working on some of those things. I mean, I think that was Steven's point last week, having this meeting this week, is instead of us spending all the time on three different models, let's just spend time on one and get moving on it and make it much more robust.
Right, so gathering all the summation of everything that's been said, it sounds like online is the model that most people are in support of.
It would be the one I recommend.
I didn't say all, I didn't say all, I said most.
So, and now that's my role, right? What's my recommendation?
Right.
As I said, three weeks ago, that's not what my recommendation would have been. My recommendation would be, we look at online. And it pains me to say that, right? I have, I have two kids in school. I know what that means, I mean, all the dominos. I I think it's just in the best interest of everyone. And we can, we can spiral up a lot easier than we can spiral back down to online. Right? If we, things are going well, we can spiral to a blended and it'll be a great thing and it'll be a positive for everybody and we'll move forward. If we start in a blended and we have to spiral down within a couple of weeks, it's just gonna be devastating for our families because they haven't planned for it. I think it'd be really hard. So that, that is where I would go. So that, that is where I would go if I was making that decision and that would be my recommendation.
Thanks for saying that. It's a hard, it's a hard thing to say, but thank you for that.
Well, you know, my email box will be a lot fuller by tomorrow.
All of ours.
I know they will, I know they have been, so.
Probably this is yours.
Sure, that chat right there.
I'm sure, but I, and I agree, this is, as I said before, this is a really hard decision and you, I think Steven said right. It would be easier, it would be easier if it's just one thing we're thinking about.
Right.
There's so much we're thinking about, right? You're thinking about what's best interest of students, what's the best interest of staff, you know, protecting them and students and their families and our community members.
Yeah.
And then also the economic impact it has on our community when our families aren't able to go to work, cause they're now having to stay home with their kids. And it's huge and it's very difficult. And I really appreciate all the time and effort the board has put in, our administrative team has put in, they put in phenomenal amount of time and hours and, um, and to, to develop this. And we, back and forth, right? And they would probably be surprised to hear me making this recommendation. I said a couple of weeks ago, I wouldn't have been. But I just see that, that how we're trending, I see like how some of the states who are really in a difficult spot right now, you know, comparing to where they were five weeks ago. Four or five weeks ago is right where we are, right? And unless we start doing some things to mitigate, like Dane County has done some things to mitigate and their numbers are starting to be a little better. But I also see, you know, there's more and I, I just see it continuing that way.
And you think there are ways to structure an online day to make it feel more like.
Yep.
A school day and to get kids more engaged and on more of a regular schedule than what we did in the fall.
And I think.
Cause we didn't know what we were doing in the spring.
There's things we can do to address all of it. We can help with internet access, there are companies that are providing free access that we can step in and try to help that. We already provide some means of that. Shelley's right, we can provide some means of technical support for, for, for families that need that. I mean, I think we, we don't go into this, we've already said this a hundred times, we're not gonna go into this like we went into it in the spring. We're gonna go into it with our eyes wide open, learning from what happened in the spring and putting a plan in place to do that. Will it be the perfect thing? No, but neither will going back to school. And frankly, I, the, the plan that scares me the most is blended. And it, it just, it feels like, to use the term you guys use all the time, that is a, that is a heavy, heavy lift. And is, is a challenge to, and I think, I think our kids would suffer under that blended plan. Sorry, we have, we have noise going on that's distracting me. But I think, I, I think if we're talking about what's best for kids, it, 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 we've gotta pick a plan that we know we can execute and execute well. And then use the time we have to build on the other plans.
Can I pick up where Steve left off here quick? I do not like the blended plan at all. I would just check it out the door. I think logistically, it's a nightmare or would be. I think for teachers, it's asking a lot. I think we should just focus on the online instruction. And then like you have the traditional instruction, you know, like a cohort model for some of those models. And, and just take that blended out of the equation. It, keep it simpler. One of the other things, it's, and maybe I was reading more into the survey was that. I don't think we've communicated anything to the teachers and staff maybe about what we would do for procedures for safety. Or maybe if we do go online to start, do we need to have like a committee to work on getting some of that together? Do we need to, um, because Steve, I think the liability, yeah, there may be some liability there, but as long as we're following CDC or like OSHA.
Agreed.
As long as we're getting our ventilation people in and documenting that they are.
Doesn't mean people won't take you to court, but you're right.
I realize that.
It does mean we're protected.
So we need, we need to be working on that too, if we do go online.
For whenever we wanna get back in the building.
For when we wanna get back in the classroom.
I agree.
So that's, and I think. You know, we're just all caught up in trying to figure out what to do. And I think there was kind of a, uh, the staff didn't realize that maybe, you know, we intended on doing masks and, and all this stuff. And had already looked into the ventilation, so.
Could be.
I just, I just have some random notes, so that was one of them.
Well, another piece I look at is I look at this, the parent survey. Fifty percent, almost fifty percent of your parents are saying they want blended or online. Right? If you add your blended and online together. It's fifty, fifty traditional blended slash online, like some sort of online, not coming back traditional. So I, I know, I'm sure there's parents out there watching this going, well, you asked us this and you're not even answering my question, you're not even taking our survey results. It has changed significantly even from the spring.
Yeah.
Like when we surveyed staff or our parents this spring, it was about eighty percent to ninety percent, we want them back.
Right.
Traditional. And now knowing what you know today, what's your preferred instructional delivery model? Uh, high school's at fifty percent, primary's at fifty-two percent, um, the other two are forty-eight, forty-seven percent back in our traditional model. So it's about fifty, fifty across the board, some sort of online in there as well. So, um, that has changed significantly as well. So I, I know when looking at that data is, is, is significant. You know, when you parse it out that way.
Well, to be honest, I thought the, um, blended was the ticket until we had our last meeting.
Me too.
And then after that meeting, I made some other phone calls to people and.
Nick sold it.
The, yeah, I, I know, but, uh, just thinking about it, it, it just would create a lot of financial issues, I think, for the district. I think it would create a lot of chaos. And I think we just need to stick to some other basic things. I mean, I like how you have the steps and I agree with Angie, I think, and Steve, that if we start out at one point, we can always, can always go forward. But it's hard to go backwards. As much as I would like to see, my ideal thought was to have, you know, four K through five in a somewhat traditional or half-day program. And then online, the middle school and high school. Because I think we can keep those kids and staff safe at, at, just because they have homerooms and they're smaller groups. And you're gonna have that percentage of parents that choose to do online, so you're not, if you have a class of fifteen to eighteen kids, you're gonna have roughly twenty percent probably that choose to do online. So then that makes your group even smaller.
There is a district in Dane County is doing something similar to that, like they're bringing in their K two kids.
That's Verona, yes.
They're planning on bringing them in.
Right.
For half-days.
For half-days, right?
For half-days, it's half-day only, yeah. So I think.
That's their model.
I, I would prefer something like that over blended.
We have more than fifteen or eighteen kids in those grades, don't we?
I don't, I don't know their model specifically.
It's a people survey, have their kids home.
Yeah, and we should always offer an online.
No, I agree with that.
I mean, the parents should have the choice of where we're at or online. Cause you're gonna, I think you're still gonna have people for whatever reason that are gonna need the online instruction.
Anyways this year, EPI has already made that decision for them, right? But parents can add up this year.
The busing, there'd be, we could make the buses safe, I think, if we kept it to that smaller group.
Well, if you go back to the statistics, most of the people would not bus their children. So then you'd only have a handful, that would be exciting for the bus company to figure out how to bus the kids, knowing what kids they would have.
But that question was phrased that we could not keep them safe on the buses.
Yeah, well.
So if we could figure out a way to do that with, I don't know.
You can't keep them socially distanced on a bus, right? If you look at six, you have to have six feet on a bus.
About three seats.
You can get about twelve, it's every other seat, opposite side, right? So you get like twelve kids on a bus. Even if you go down to four feet, it doesn't add a whole lot anymore kids, it just, it's, um, it's very difficult to figure out. Busing is a huge, another tripping point, right? That you just can't get around. Like, how do you do busing in a way that keeps kids safe? And now you're talking about cohorts in each class, class, well, now all these kids are together. And again, you would, you would have socially, emotionally talking about, you would assign seats. First kid on, backseat, next kid on, next, and families would sit together, which I know growing up, I loved sitting my siblings on a bus, right? So it, it, that would be another issue, right? Is how, how would we do busing in a safe way? And again, it's, it's easy to say, well, we're just not gonna do it, right? But we gotta talk to our liability insurance cover, you know, coverage and all those things and you, you know, I'm the one who's gonna be sitting on the court. So if somebody gets sick and, you know, what made you think kids didn't have to be six feet apart? When all the guidance from CDC, da, 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 you know, all.
All these different places.
All these health professionals said they should be six feet apart. What, why are you an expert in public health? Tell me your background. I don't, I'm not, right?
Stayed at a Holiday Inn one day.
I did. That shows you where, what generation you're from. I said that the other day to a bunch of people and the half of them didn't get it. Stayed at a Holiday Inn Express.
Well, the only thing we haven't done is take a vote and that's gonna be fairly simple. But I talked to early about tripping points. Is there something we could strive toward? To do something other than just online learning?
Well, again, I think what we talked about was like enhanced online, so bringing kids in, right? So one of the things that I would start with staff is now is like, okay, who really struggled in the spring, engaging them? Like starting putting together some list of kids that we need to maybe start thinking about, like these are kids, if they don't engage right away, we need to bring them in. Or who are some of ours that are really needy kids that we need to bring in and engage? And start working that way through small groups. And again, continue to watch the metrics in Dane and Columbia County and in our area and see how they go. Most of the schools in our area have like made a decision for like a term, like they've either the, through, through the first term through November or through the first semester. But I think those are the things you have to look at, like where are those? You know, is that working? Bringing kids in, is, is staff staying healthy? Is kids staying healthy or, you know, are we getting the, the things that we need? And then can we, or what are some things, again, trying to dig into that document, that matrix I put together or rubric I put together? Like how do we bring kids back, um, in a more robust fashion?
If I may, just really quick, and I think it's, you know, and I know it still has to go to a vote, um, on where we start out from when we come to the fall. And I appreciate your comments about, you know, the blended approach. But I do think we have to, um, continue discussions around that as we think about a progression and a phase. Because it's probably unlikely that if we were to come back in a, or start in a virtual model and if we think about that progression, that we would be able to transition from a virtual to everyone back into the building at every level. And so, uh, what would that look like, right? And in an effective way, so.
And I think, I think, I think you're right and I think we can, if, once we get to a point where we voted and we move in then, then we can start working on those plans. Like, dare I say it, we could, if we go online, we might be able to push the start date a week or two, give staff more time to really develop online curriculum. So that we get good stuff. Since you're already working on that online curriculum, going to a blended model then means it's not as much work as if we said, right now, you're going to a blended model. Where I have to do two types of learning environments, I have to do in the classroom and online. That was the part that was like, was a heavy lift. I, I think if we're in one model and then we have to, and we're, and the whole time we know we're striving towards the next step, then we're working towards that. Versus last year when we were just thrown into the deep end with no preparation or.
Well, and again, you're, you're, the, the robustness of the online model, that becomes the backbone of your blended model.
Yeah, right.
Right? Versus the other way around, the robustness of your in-person, now it's trying to bleed into the.
Which doesn't work anyway.
It doesn't work very well. So it, it works the other way, cause now you're doing enhanced things based on what you're doing online in that blended model.
Yeah, you're supplementing your, your online model. I, I, so I think that is, I, I feel more comfortable with that and I agree with you. I don't think, I don't see before the end of this year, being able to go back to full-time, everybody in a building. Cause we just, we don't have the physical facilities to do that right now. But a blended model, we might could do before the end of the year if the numbers, I mean, and I, and I agree, that Dane County is trending the right direction with the things that they're doing. I think all their school districts, making those decisions are gonna help work in that direction. We may be sitting here in September saying, okay, let's start talking about what the next phase is. That would be awesome.
That would be awesome.
And I think parents really need to understand what it will look like when kids come back, cause it's gonna be vastly different than what they expect. And I don't know that there's a true understanding of that, cause it's, it is hard to picture, it's, it's hard for me to even picture.
Yeah. Well, that's one of the, again, one of the reasons we're doing, um, summer school.
Right.
Right? So if you look at our social media feed, there should be, there's a couple of pictures of our kids holding a piece of rope, lining up six feet apart, right? And in a desk, spread out, again, it's a small group. But again, even after about three days, our kids are struggling, I mean, they're youngest kids, they've had masks on, they're starting to struggle a little bit more with masks. They're struggling with social distance, peace on the playground, they're, again, all the things you expect, right? From our youngest learners, um, all our learners. But so it's, it's trying, but that gives us a visual image level bit. When you see, you know, ten kids spread out across the room all wearing masks, they're in little backpacks, right? And kindergartners, just excited to be in school. It's going really well, but it's twenty kids, you know, total, two classes, right around there. And even at the high school, like you, we brought kids in for some things, right? They brought them in and coaches were awesome, standing at the door, spread out, single file. But you get kids out and then you get them back out in the parking lot and all of a sudden you see them, four of them jumping in the same car, right? And you're like, well, glad we spent all our time trying to keep you apart during practice and then you jump into a car together. So it's, that part is difficult.
And I think that makes a good point for staff too, is they have control over their environment when they're in the building. But they have no control over what families are doing outside of school and that's putting our staff at risk too.
And, and the other piece of this is gonna be a discussion about the expectations for staff, right? Cause if you're gonna ask for a guaranteed viable curriculum that's online, I need to know you have a robust internet. Well, I can guarantee you have that at school, right? Your materials are here at school. So the question becomes then, what are the requirements for staff to be here at school? And, you know, and so you look at some of the other districts, models, there, some of them are like, you're here. Others are, there's some flexibility there. They're like, you're in the building five hours, four times a week. These are the five hours you're gonna be in here. So it's twenty or forty hours, you're in the building doing things, getting things prepared. You're still teaching from home as well, right? But it provides a little bit more of that flexibility as well, um, for staff. But that's, that's a conversation that's gonna get driven by that answer to the first question.
And we should say, cause we haven't talked about it yet, but it's very important, it's in the back of my mind, it's, I'm sure it's in the back of all of our minds, is that, that the pressure that an online or a blended model is gonna put on parents is huge.
Absolutely.
And I think that's, it's just because we haven't said anything about it, doesn't mean we're not thinking about it, it's, it's there. We're all dealing with it in one way or the other ourselves. As a couple of parents pointed out to me is it's summer right now, the kids are all at home, how are you managing that now? That may be the plan that you have to manage it going forward. It's tough, you know, some of us aren't working, some of us aren't working full-time, um, that makes it tough. Julie mentioned already, the access to technology is, is another strain. And I think, you know, we will do better about putting resources up on, on the website, you know, the, the library was open, I think it's still open.
Public library?
The public library, yeah, so they have internet that, that can be used. I mean, I think we have to get those, we have to make sure that parents have, have a location that they can go to. Our great brand new website would be perfect for that, that says, here's the information that we have that can help you. Here's people in the district you can contact if you feel like you're struggling or that your child is struggling. Because I think in the spring, I think the Wisconsin nice took over and I'm saying that as a Texan. That I think, you know, I, we didn't want to bother the teachers because we knew the teachers. That I think, you know, I, we didn't want to bother the teachers because we knew the teachers were working really hard. But you wanted to have that conversation saying, my kid's not getting this. And, and we didn't, right? And I think as parents, we have to get over that and say, no, the teacher's there to support you, whether it's online, blended, or in-person. If your child is struggling, if you're struggling, you need to get over the Wisconsin nice, pick up the phone. Don't be rude. But, but pick up the phone and talk to him. And I know that as, as a board member and as, my wife is a wife of a board member, we were both, we wouldn't even make that phone call. So I get it that other people-
I did.
And maybe it's because we're board members that, that we, we didn't, I don't know. But, um, and we, and, and so I think that's part of it. And I think teachers have to be the other direction too. Is I think there was a lot of thought of, well, the parents are struggling, I'm not, I've heard you guys say it last week, that, well, grading's gotta be different because everybody's got different circumstances. I get it, but there has to be some kind of accountability for kids. There needs to be some kind of accountability for parents to help their kids. And those are all things that you guys said you would help figure out. I trust you. I think we have the best staff anywhere in Wisconsin. We've, we've done incredible, amazing things in this district. And I, I think, you know, Angie said it before, I think we can knock this out of the park if we do it right and we give ourselves the time to do it, whichever plan we go with.
And, and I can attest to, I, my child did struggle with online majorly. And I did reach out to all of his teachers and was floored by the response and how they went about connecting and making sure, not even school stuff, just having conversations about video games and if he was taking care of himself and hunting and, and it was just really good. So I, I do think it can happen.
Yeah, and I see both, right? I see it overwhelming for both. Cause I see parents having to work all day and then come home and try to help their kids, right? And I also see staff working all day and then coming home and then answering emails and questions and-
And get their own kids.
And their own kids.
With their own kids, plus making phone calls and things like that, cause that's what works for parents, right?
Yeah.
So it, there, this is not an easy, none of us wanna be in this situation, right? And I, and I agree with you, in the spring, it was like, it was just overwhelming. I mean, the thought of, if you'd have said in, in January, like, we're gonna shut the whole state down. You'd be like, what? We shut the whole state down. And it was overwhelming for us psychologically and emotionally. And so we did the best we can and I think everybody did the best they can. We've now been dealing this for quite a while, right? And it's still overwhelming, right? And we still gotta think about the emotional toll this is taking on all of us. Cause this is just not a normal time. Like, we've been dealing, having to deal with this, even trying to figure this part out. But then also, you know, going home and not seeing, like, you know, trying to decide, do I go see my eighty-two-year-old father? Right? At some point, I gotta go see him, you know? In order to, I, my wife, we go up and see my in-laws, so she lives three hours away. You know, my mother-in-law's eighty, do we go see her? And what risks does that bring to her? That stress is going on in everyone's life, like, and you mentioned before, people aren't, aren't working. And, you know, you come here and we have the food pantry or second harvest food and just see the line of cars coming to pick up food and things like, which is awesome that we have that opportunity. A lot of people are hurting and this decision is gonna hurt some more, right? But we're all in this together. And that's the one thing about this community is we pull together and we help each other and we support each other. And, and I've always been so impressed, the tightness, knitness of this community and how we work together. And even through decisions we don't always like, right? Nobody, people rarely take their ball and go home.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Which, which is not the way it is in a lot of places.
Right?
A lot of places, people take their ball and go home. No, I don't like that decision, I'm not engaging anymore. So that's my hope, is that we continue to work together to pull that.
Okay.
I wanna, I'm nameless, Shelly. Just a quick comment. I think that we have to remember that, not that, I've seen a few people writing in here thinking about parents being accountable. That doesn't mean that you are accountable for everything. I think that means that sometimes you have to suck it up like we are trying to do right now and get, get the best results that we possibly can. No one wants this, we want our kids in school. Every person wants their kids in school, we know what is best for them. However, we can't do that right now with all the other factors that have been factored in. And we have been discussing this for months because we want what is best for children. And we sent out a survey so that we look at everything. And then we're going to have to do, probably in another week or two, we're gonna get back together and relook at things and possibly send out another survey. Because we are all in a new area. So I want you to keep that in mind, we are working very hard to get, to do the best we can. So we appreciate your patience. And we know that we want kids in school, you know we want kids in school. We have a lot of other input and other things from Dane County and other places that are also factored into our decision. Shelly out.
Well, and again, I think it, it, Warren's saying, you know, when you look at the survey results, it's about a fifty-fifty split about parents finding some sort of blended slash online learning and traditional. Right? So it's. And, and, and holding parents accountable, I don't know if it's the right word, is, is working together with parents as a partnership. Each of us, holding their child accountable to their, their learning, cause it's an important, it's such an important thing. Right? Cause parents are out there doing the best that they can and it's hard, right? As Julie was talking before. You know, I'm the superintendent, I can't do my high school students calculus at this point. It's been a long time since I've done calculus.
I can tell you the answer, but-
And some of the other stuff as well. So it's, it's, it's hard and, and there's no question and-
And my point about, if I said accountability, my point about that was that, at least in, in the Ricks household, the arguments that we had with our student about the work that was required were ridiculous. Because it was like, we heard from an eleven-year-old, it's pass fail dad, it doesn't matter. We heard, well, no, that was just a suggestion to go do that. We heard, so the accountability part was to give parents something to say, no, no, it says right here, your teacher says this has to be good or dead.
So we're clear.
It, yeah, it wasn't about holding parents accountable to doing the work. It was, it was about giving parents tools to be able to use with their children to say, no, it's not optional. Because what, what the, what the phrase ended up being in the Ricks household was, we don't care what your teacher says. Mom and dad says you're doing this work.
I remember we were all just like thrown in the ocean and, with sharks around us like.
Yep, yep.
So.
And it was the right decision for the, for the spring.
Oh, absolutely.
I don't think it's the right decision for the fall.
Should we try to set a date through which we will do virtual? Like, we'll do it for first quarter or something to give people a, communicate to people what we're thinking about?
Definitely have a review date of when we're gonna sit down and review the, if, if, I mean, I think to me, there's always, if things drastically improve over a period of time, we can always revisit the situation, right?
That was always in the plan, correct? That if things change, right now, the numbers are not good in our surrounding areas. And the reason that Dane County and Columbia County are all included is we have a lot of people that trail. So if the situation changes, we have every right and would gladly like to change it for a better mold, mold.
But Bill, I also agree with what you're saying, which is let's have a time where we, we're, we come together to talk about it.
When's first quarter end?
Nah, probably November fourth, right around there somewhere.
Okay, so-
So you probably, what I would say if you're gonna make that decision is that we look at what that date is specifically. But you make a decision, we're gonna go online through that date, but then you'll probably review it at the October board meeting, right? And that gives you two or three weeks prior to that being able, maybe even, you know, probably three weeks prior to that before you-
Let's face it, we'll be talking about it in September and October and-
Right.
Talk about it every month, yes.
I mean, we'll be talking about it, right? But at least then you'll have, and you may know, like, we don't even have to put that on the October agenda, right? Cause we've been having discussions and it's been, it's been-
Yeah, I would argue it's on every agenda.
Yeah, I think so too. But I'm just, if you wanna see a, a point, like that, that would be a decision point which drops you into, then October would be, board meeting would be the decision point for what you're gonna do in past November.
So the transition period.
That's why I was looking for the discussion. So let's try this. I make the motion that we go online until the end of first quarter. And you can do the, um, you can set up some kind of a system to where the students that are unsuccessful online can be identified somehow or another and brought in or communicated with on a more personal basis. Now, I know, uh, this past spring, there was discussion about having aides do some of that, go to those students.
Is your, is your motion finished?
Yeah.
Well, we need to, we need to pick some directions.
No, I'm just wondering, I wanna second your motion if you're gonna, if you're done.
Uh, you did, the date that we're gonna review it at are October four.
I think we're gonna review it, everybody.
Well, that's kind of a given.
I'm saying through November sixth, it looks like.
First quarter. So would you call that online plus? Is that what other students think?
Uh, I can't, I think I would call it enhanced.
Yeah, enhanced.
Online enhanced.
Online enhanced.
So we're in the same terms as everybody else. Okay, so a motion by Whipper first and a second by Ricks.
Sure.
Any further discussion?
I don't wanna throw another jinx in there, but have we thought, given any thought to the possibility of K-two instruction with K-two teachers in person? Or do we feel that that is still, with the numbers that we've seen, we still feel that that is probably not, it's not the best way to go?
I think it goes down back to staff, staff in that, that, those groups. Would we have enough staff to do that?
Okay. I know we talked about that before, I just, I'm just trying to come up with anything, you know, that I think will be better.
I, I guess, I would say, let's, my, again, my commission would stay online and then we can start exploring that. Like, that might be something that you bring, we come back to the board and say in September, in October, we'd like to try to bring back
This.
This group of kids, right? Or something like that. But that's something, as we look at the numbers and how things are going, can we do that?
Yeah, and I think, I think I could speak for all of us in that we are incredibly flexible about hearing any change come forward.
Yeah, again, we all want everybody back, we do. But I think, again, for the planning purposes, to start off the year the way we've talked about, like, I, I think it just makes the most sense starting that way and then we can try to step some of those pieces in.
The nice part about, I think, the enhanced piece is that you could scale up those groups or scale back those groups depending on the data you have. So, you know, it could bring in a lot more kids. If the data looks good, you could scale up more groups, so.
Well, we live for emails from administration on what's going on.
They're the only ones that talk to me anymore.
I can cut back on those if you like.
I don't know that this is amendment or a wording change, but I think instead of using the, the phrase, students who are failing, we'd say students who need additional assistance.
But that's all in, under the enhance umbrella.
I get that, but I want the motion to reflect that, not to reflect failing. Cause I don't think that's what Bill meant, that was just the word he-
Said unsuccessful.
Unsuccessful, yeah. Okay, thank you. Are you okay with that change to students that need help?
Just, just read it.
You were quick to correct me.
Come on now, Miss Palmer, we know you're good at this.
We want Whipper for Ricks to go online enhanced until the end of first quarter. Set up system for the students that are unsuccessful so they can be brought in and/or communicated in person.
Would, would that include students that are just struggling like emotionally also?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to do, yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Enhanced and leave the rest of it. If it really is all put into one-
It's all under that umbrella.
Online enhanced, are you okay with that?
Yeah. Sure.
What about like high school chemistry labs or something?
Yeah, everybody, I mean, that's, that's-
Would that be a possibility? So maybe it's not just, um, for those courses requiring in person.
Right, so as a, as a quick side note, online chemistry labs, just as one example, have been around for years. No one would touch them. The minute we shut down last spring, everybody tried them out and said, oh my God, these are amazing. So it's not so much that way anymore that-
No kid ever has said, oh my God, chemistry labs are amazing.
So, so that means there's a possibility we can sell programs if we shut down.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Yeah, you're, that's not that-
How are we in that motion? Are we just leaving it as a first section, Ricks to go online enhanced? Sorry, Whipper for Ricks to go online enhanced until the end of first quarter? And we're just, and we're taking the rest out?
Sure. I want a date.
Yeah, it's first quarter, that's the date.
This feels like successful failure.
I think regardless of what decision we come up to, it's gonna feel that way.
Yes. Shelly, did you wanna add anything you were talking?
Um, yeah, I did, but I'm moving now, so I had to figure out what it was I wanted to add. If somebody feels they need help, I think we need to have lifeline for that.
Right.
And whatever the groups are, I'm not sure how that can be situated. It's over my paper. But I, I think we need to, to put it out to parents. I know Vince, you've done like a, a gazillion, a gazillion surveys out to people. But I think we need to have a way to put it out so that we can figure out which teachers can help which students.
Right, again, that would fall under that enhanced, online enhanced.
Okay. Okay.
Let's vote.
Hey, okay, any other further discussion? It's a roll call vote because that's all we do these days. Steven?
Yes.
Shelly?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
And Adam says yes, so passes seven to zero.
This sure has been fun.
I gotta say, that's the hardest thing we've had to do since I've been on the board.
Yeah. I'll pipe it in, I've been on the board as long as Steven.
Not a lot of topics make me think about it and change my mind so many times in a day.
Day's not over yet, Bill.
Yeah, we got more.
The one thing that we've, that we've always had, and I have friends all the time, is that we've never had a board meeting. We didn't smile at or laugh at something because sometimes it's just what's needed to be done. And I've been very proud of this board for tolerating, um, dealing with my electronic issues. So with that, I'll, I'll be, I'll go, yeah, Shelly, I'll be out.
We, we use laughing as a coping mechanism.
So where we're going next?
Well, I, I think, so next we will have to make some decisions or recommendations regarding staff, right? So that's, I think, comes back to us as administrators to come back to you saying this is what needs to happen, right? So I, I think there needs to be some conversation about that at our level. And then bringing you a recommendation that, um, you know, or you just give us that direction, that's what we do, it doesn't come from our level either.
I don't think we know enough, we got-
I don't think we do either, I think, I think we-
I mean, I don't think we can make a decision today, right? We don't have a recommendation here for you. So I mean, a- again, it kinda comes back to the point, we, that's why we're here today. It's like, once we make this decision, now somebody's up, lockstep into them. So next decision is like, okay, now we have to make a staff decision, co-curricular, we'll have to make a decision based on, if we're going online, what are we gonna do with co-curriculars? And I'll need to come back with a recommendation at that, this, uh, August tenth board meeting. This is what we are gonna do with co-curriculars for the fall.
And again, if you need us to meet again, we're happy to meet again. You just let us know.
Yeah.
Just gotta say the word, we'll just do it.
Well, I, I don't know when, I mean, again, it's a week and a half.
Right. When's your next vacation, we'll cancel that one.
I actually am gonna do that one online, I was going to, remember? So yes, if you wanna move on next week and have one next week instead of the following week, that- So yes, if you wanna move on next week and have one next week instead of the following week, that would be awesome. That'd be so much better than the one.
That's right, you already were doing that one online, that's right.
I was going to, yeah, I planned it, we'll see.
That's your wedding interview, so.
No, I'm the wedding, oh.
Okay, four oh two, first policy reading on Title IX policies.
Oh geez.
Yeah, this was, this was a good one too, so.
Uh, so yeah, so we are required to adopt these two policies by August tenth, I'm sorry, August fourteenth. Uh, so Joanne Hart joined the policy committee, uh, last Wednesday. Um, we worked with, um, her to create these policies or they've shared them with us. And also she will work on blending them into all of our other policies. Um, we really didn't have a whole lot of choice in any of this. They came out with new guidance, um, in, I wanna say, uh, May, I think they finally dropped the guidance and they're required to be adopted by August. Um, so it's a real tight turnaround. There are several lawsuits going on regarding this, and Wisconsin's a part of one of those. Um, but it still hasn't changed the fact that we have to have a policies adopted by August fourteenth. So these two policies are up for first read. Um, they were approved at the policy committee and instead of, we thought we would have to just have one reading and suspend their other policy, but since we had an extra board meeting, um, we threw them on here.
Can somebody from the policy meeting.
Yeah, let me add to that, let me add to that. So the law says you will do this.
I, I get that.
No, 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 no. And so therefore we follow the law, we're a school, we follow the law, that's what the law says. This does not take away our other policies on discrimination.
Okay.
This is a heavy lift for the budget and it's a heavy lift for staff.
And will require some training.
Quite a bit of training.
Quite a bit of training.
So maybe you answer my, what I was gonna, the question I was gonna ask is, can somebody on the policy committee explain to me how they wrap their head around going, being okay with this? Because I need help with that.
The law says you will do this, we are a school district, we do things by the law. That is how we wrapped our head around it.
So we asked that question.
I drove Title IX.
The, the, the question was asked, right? And Joanne Hart made it clear, right? And it was the same answer I gave whoever asked that question earlier, when we talked about them before we even had the policies. And you are putting the district in significant amount of risk by not adopting these policies. If we would have a Title IX complaint in late August, we would be found in violation.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I might have sent the question wrong, I think. I, I get all that.
So because we follow the law and the law has changed, we can then talk about, after we adopt this, how we fit this in and how it fits in and how we change other things around it.
Okay.
That is our only, that is our only option that we can do.
Okay.
So we'll blend them into our other policies and make sure, I mean, again, um.
This is a little bit bigger deal than the Twinkie thing, to me. I mean, the Twinkie thing was big, this is, uh.
It is.
Astronomically bigger.
This is a big policy and it's a, it's a heavy, as, that's a heavy lift in it.
Okay, so, so the answer is you didn't wrap your head around it, other than the fact that we have the, the ability to massage it as we're implementing it in our other policies, not change it.
According to Joanne Clark, I gotta hand it to them, Boardman Ed Clark, they did a phenomenal job of tweaking this as best they could for us, to fit us, and other districts didn't get that. Other districts got much longer, not as tweaked. So this is as good as we could get.
Okay. Yay.
Hey, is right.
This job keeps getting better and better.
Yeah. So what?
You're welcome.
Do we make a drink down there?
Do we make a motion on first policies?
Nope.
No, we just, we just ask questions.
Yeah, we made the mistake last, one meeting, remember?
Yeah.
Not that you can't approve it, you could, but, uh, no, we just read it, it'll be on the next, for approval at the next, uh, board meeting on August tenth.
Okay. And we do need to go to closed session because we do have personnel matters that need.
We do have to go to closed session, yes.
Speaking of getting better.
Yeah.
It won't, it shouldn't take us long.
So.
Oh, I'll make a motion to adjourn to closed se- session, uh, in pursuit of Wisconsin statute second, sections nineteen point eight five one C, E, and F and G to consider employment and compensation for administrators, teachers, support staff, coaches, crew, and performance evaluation data.
Second.
Motion by Steven and second by Bill. Any further discussion? Uh, so, roll call vote, Steven.
Yes.
Shelly.
Yes.
Barb.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Julie.
Yes.
Angie.
Yes.
And Adam says yes, so we're in non-closed session after a ten-minute.
No, we have to, we have to go to the whole session, all right?
Yes, you have to go to the other link, Shelly.
Don't log on, log back in. Thank you to everyone that joined us.
Thanks, everybody who joined.
We appreciate your comments, we really do. Everything will be, uh, looked at and, uh, thank you for joining in with us today.
Oh, Lord.
Thank you.
You can eat.
Thank you.
What are you?
It's not one AM, I'm happy.